Call this meeting of the Tax Abatement Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the role at this time. Councilman Holt?
Present.
Councilman Michler?
Present. It was blue, it's not anymore.
Yeah, I had it blue.
All right, folks, we are here tonight regarding the 2025 tax abatements. There will be no action taken tonight other than a recommendation back to the Elkhart City Common Council of whether or not the company is in compliance or not in compliance. We are addressing the noncompliant companies only in person here. Clerk, could you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-25 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-25, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether American Technology Components Incorporated (ATC), 1127 Miles Avenue (LLC) are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5221, R 5521, and R 5621.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor for council discussion. Drew?
Thank you, Council. So ATC was approved for a 10-year real property and 10-year, or five-year personal property tax phase-in in 2021. They are, they are compliant for real property and personal property investments, but they are, they have been under two years in a row for new jobs hired.
Okay, do we know why? Did they?
They've experienced industry issues, being heavy, heavy in the RV industry, RV industry. They are representatives from ATC here this, here this evening. We want to give them the chance, opportunity to talk about their project and, and more about their business and industry. their business and industry.
Absolutely have come up.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Steve Haynes.
Hi, Steve.
Owner and chairman of ATC. If I knew it was so hot in here, I'd wear a shirt.
Sorry about that.
I just want to give kind of like just a broad overview of my philosophy of Elkhart and the community and kind of turn over my controller to explain the details.
Sure.
But I was born at the corner of Pleasant Plain and Hive Lane back in 1964 and went to Munger High School and then ended up at Concord High School, went down to Indiana University. And my extended family's been here for four or five generations, farmers. My grandfather on one side of the family had 12 brothers and sisters. The other side of the family, 12 brothers and sisters. My dad's side of the family, business people that were in Elkhart for their entire life. And they instilled kind of a sense of community and service to our area. And they inspired me to come back to Elkhart. And Elkhart has been good for my family over the years. They've been hard workers and most college kids, unfortunately, from, you know, I have three nieces, they all went to different schools and they all moved to different jobs in big cities. And we're just trying to inspire that generation to remain in Elkhart. And so that was kind of my motivation to come back to Elkhart. So I purchased the company when I was 27 years old from a gentleman that still owns a private company here in Elkhart, was 72 years old, has kind of been my business mentor. And the location that we chose and with great help from you guys in the tax abatement. I remember many of my great aunts working for Miles Laboratory back in the day, some with 40, 50 years of service. I remember when they were sold to Bayer. I remember when Bayer promised to keep the employment in Elkhart, corporate headquarters in Elkhart. I think at one time, Miles was perhaps the largest, one of the largest employers in Elkhart. And we had a vacant site. The employment is basically zero. And so that was important for me from a historical standpoint to bring manufacturing, and not only manufacturing, but state-of-the-art manufacturing back to that area. And so we invested in a building that I think is iconic and it allows us to attract talent, people from outside the area. Give one example, before we had the building, we partnered with Notre Dame and their STEM program, which we had internships from Notre Dame for the summer. And one served for two years, one served for one year, one left, went for, after they graduated, went to Tesla. One left after one year for their internship after they graduated from Notre Dame and went to SpaceX. And I'm proud to say that we have a Notre Dame graduate that's outside area. She's a great gal, beautiful resume, top qualifications, accepted a job offer to work for us in our engineering department. And that's the type of quality people we're looking for. We have made tremendous improvements in our equipment, technology that does not take away from employment, but improves our competitive nature in the world. There's tremendous instability right now with tariffs and everything and running a business and not knowing what input costs are. We have, before we purchased or bought this bill or built this building, we were in the process of moving certain production back from a factory in China to the United States, which we have and we're continuing to do so. We also have an injection molding company located at the facility. And we're, I think we're moving 20 to 30 tools back from China to America, which will increase our employment and make us more nimble. With that said, we have been compliant with capital improvements and equipment purchases and all that. We had a once-in-a-lifetime swan, black swan event called COVID. And when we, when they granted us the abatement for employment and the RV industry in 2021, when that abatement was granted, we produced 600,000 units. For a variety of reasons, that's pulled future demand and sales forward. Last year, the RV industry sold 333,000 units. And in 2024, excuse me, 2014, 10 years ago, the RV industry units sold 356,000 units, which is actually was above what it was last year. So that is one of the key reasons why our employment level has not kept up with what we signed in the agreement. With that said, with the equipment and our cutting-edge technology and the type of people we're bringing onboard, we're increasing employment and we're outpacing the growth of the RV industry. But to be quite honest, that unusual event that occurred with COVID really affected employment unusually. And it's, unfortunately, it's something that I would say that we, we're going to get to that growth figure in employment at some point in time, but it was due to that RV industry spike.
Thank you.
And one more thing I might add. So also, we are, our top 10 key membership or leadership people in our company have 274 years of service. We, I grew up with our top leadership in the 20s, 30s, 40s, now I'm 61 years old. They have no plans of selling the company. You know, people at my age, sometimes they want to like just retire and go off to the beach or whatever. They sell it to private equity. And private equity has no, they don't care about jobs or Elkhart, they care about profits. And the company is going to be kept private. We, in the last five years, have pushed down leadership growth to the second generation, including ownership. And I just want to make the commitment, and my commitment means a lot to me, that that type of situation that Miles had when they sold to Bayer will not happen under our leadership.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you for your continued commitment to Elkhart. It's a beautiful building. You are absolutely correct, a personal property has a compliance rate of 100 and the real property is 166%. My only concern there is on the SB 1, there was an estimated 68 new jobs supposed to be created and the CF 1 shows that zero were created from that. And to my understanding, Drew, that's been two years in a row that we've had that issue. So if I could just have some clarification on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Jordan Hester's the controller. Yeah, just give me a couple of minutes, I'll run through some of the key points. As he mentioned, I mean, the levels from 2021 to 2024, RV downturn about 45%. Our business is roughly 55% RV, so very heavily weighted on that. Our numbers on that original abatement, not necessarily that we expected the RV industry to keep going up from the 600,000, but we kind of expected that it would maintain somewhat similar, similar levels or at least, you know, back off a little bit, not to the extent it has. With that being said, our other business, our other industries, light truck, marine, ag, industrial, those have actually all went up 15% in that time period. So if the marine, or sorry, if the RV industry had just essentially maintained or even stayed somewhat close, I think we would have had no problem hitting those numbers. Additionally, our hourly wage on the abatement were about 32% over what we needed to hit for that. And that's excluding any bonuses and that's a key piece of our compensation at around 10% probably total compensation. So that's even throwing that out of the equation as that has to be excluded. With that being said, the real estate investment, we said we'd hit about 14 million. We're over 23 million and still adding some stuff. Equipment, around 3.7 million, we're over 4 million on that. So I mean, knocked everything else out of the water. We have gone down on employees, current headcount. So we were at about 154 on that abatement, our filing in 2024. We're currently sitting at 165. Recently heard from our HR president, CEO, that we're probably going to look to hire very quickly another five to 10 due to a new opportunity. As Steve mentioned, we've got tooling coming back from China, which is going to add employment. So I mean, we could easily be at, you know, 180 soon. So again, that's all still with the RV industry down. So I guess that's, that's the main piece that this hangs on if the RV industry does see an uptick. Obviously, we've had a crazy economy here recently. Interest rates have been high, this is a luxury purchase. So if that does turn around, yeah, you know, we would be in a hiring frenzy, so.
Alex, do you have any questions?
I'm just interested. I do appreciate details, appreciate bringing things back from China. I was wondering if there's any kind of automation that has been implemented over the last couple of years. And you know, if you don't want to share, I totally understand, but I appreciate it.
Done some work with Purdue University on their automation and Notre Dame. We picked up some business on a step light. I think we make about 700,000 pieces a year that goes in a running board light for the OEM truck industry that was, that we won that business from China because we worked through these, applied for us, actually a state grant that we got half of it paid for, but we put some automation equipment in. We're producing that step wheel light that was made in China by a competitor here in Elkhart. And we will continue to automate. That's one of my, I'm a cutting-edge technology guy and I believe in automation. Not automation to eliminate jobs, automation to be productive and low cost in this country.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think I have a question for Drew, actually. So Drew, what are our options? I mean, I do appreciate the investment, the commitment to Elkhart and, you know, they exceeded the 100% with the real property and then we're at 100% for the personal property. I just wonder, this is my first opportunity really to be here and make a motion, so I just want to know what my options are.
Thank you, Councilman Holt. So we want to, you know, lay the facts out for council, highlight what's in the CF 1, give the company the opportunity to just speak about their business and about their industry. So our options going forward are to, council could, or you as the committee can make a recommendation that they've made substantial efforts to be in compliance and they, then if, if council on July 9th was of the same opinion, they would, they would then receive their benefit. And alternatively, if council did not think that they had made substantial efforts to be in compliance, they would, they would not receive their benefit. There would be, there would be an additional meeting within 30 days of the July 9 determination and council would have three options then. Either change their minds and say they have made substantial efforts to be in compliance, rule that they have not made substantial efforts and they would lose the deduction for just that year, just tax year 25, pay 26, or determine they have not made reasonable efforts to be in compliance and terminate their entire phase-in. Those are council's three options.
So Drew, could?
Alex, we could also keep it in committee if we chose to do that as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is it possible to make a recommendation where they are in compliance with the real property phase-in, but then out of compliance for personal property or we can't split it?
That is not an option.
Okay.
If I may.
Please, go ahead.
You know, they've done a great job when it came to personal property and for real property as well. You know, I am really concerned, you know, 68 new jobs, they came in front of city council and that was part of the original abatement. I understand that that was the height of the RV frenzy and everything like that. However, it seems like we are negative jobs currently. So it's frustrating to see that, but I will say that I am encouraged to hear that they do have a plan to increase that employment by bringing manufacturing material back. My question would be, would that be at this facility where that would be, those jobs would come back to? Please, please speak into the mic.
Sorry. The tooling and everything that's coming back from China is going to be manufactured at, at our facility.
Do we have any estimate of a timetable for that? Please.
I think some of it's already been shipped back, so we're already running it and some of it's on the boat coming back. I also must add that this abatement really helps us and allows us to improve and improve automation and improve equipment that allows to have a, not just a worker that's an employee that's snapping switches in, but a higher skilled person that's, that has a higher wage, that is trained to operate these sophisticated equipments. I would welcome any time if the council wants to have, you know, have you guys over to show you the facility, I'm more welcome to have you guys over.
Appreciate that.
So do we expect it within the next year, two years, three years?
Yeah, the tooling, so some of the tooling's already back, just kind of on a container that comes over monthly. We're starting to bring some back on those as they fit. So yeah, there's already a few back, so those will be starting soon, which end up could, will most likely add a third shift, that type of thing, but also add a little bit to the first shift as well. So it'll be kind of, it's kind of an ongoing process at this point in time, just little by little moving, moving. It has already started.
And would that bring you back to base level or could it potentially start to turn on this 68 new jobs that were?
Oh, based off of the five to 10 that I think that we're going to be hiring very soon, plus those, yeah, I mean, we could be over the 177 like soon and then start knocking away the additional jobs. So I would imagine we'd be over the 177 here at the end of, or as a full-time equivalent in 2025 and then hopefully, assuming the RV industry turns around at least somewhat, we could really see a bump, so.
Okay. So it's good to hear that there's a plan to bring those forward. Thank you.
And one more point is some of the production that's made in China is of long, it takes a little bit longer than a, you know, six months to 12 months. Our plan, we make a major production line of brake lights that's been made in China for, in Taiwan, then China for 20 years. That requires substantial planning and equipment purchases and automation, but that is in process, but it will, it's not a type of thing that can happen overnight. It's probably maybe two years out, but that is our, one of our goals.
Thank you.
Drew, I was going to ask you, I'm glad you're coming up. Go ahead and add what you want.
I misspoke a minute ago. Councilman Holt, when you asked if we, if council can rule them in compliance for personal, for real property, but non-compliant for personal property, council can certainly do that. You guys have that option on, on your resolutions. However, that in the, in this instance, you know, the jobs are in the memorandums agreement for both real property and personal property, we highlight compliance for jobs. So in this situation, that would not be applicable, but in other situations, if a company was under for one or the other, they could be compliant for, you could rule them in compliance for one, but not the other.
So Drew, my question to you is what is your recommendation for our resolution?
We want to, city staff wants to highlight what's on the CF 1s, give council, or give the company the opportunity to highlight their issues they've been having and, and the highlights of the project, the new building, you know, significant investment in the new building and personal property. But we want, we want to highlight that information for you guys and, and let council designate and body make the determination.
And they will be back next year as well, correct?
That.
If the abatement were to continue, they would be back next year for us to review.
They have a 10-year, 10-year real property abatement, five-year personal property abatement. So they, yes, sir, they would be.
So for me, they are making a continued effort to bring those jobs back, even if it's back to their baseline level and add to that. If it, if they weren't really, then I would be a little more concerned, but they're at their percentages for real property and personal property. This is the way I'm looking at it right now. You know, they have another year, kind of in my opinion.
So I think I hear you. I always respect the city staff. I think I would be making a motion counter to their recommendation based on what you just said, if I were to recommend that we pass the revolution, resolution stating that they're in compliance. Or should I, do you think it would be more appropriate to make the resolution stating they're not in compliance and let the whole city council decide? they're not in compliance and let the whole city council decide? Mr. Huber, if you have input, but please go ahead, Aaron, first. I'm interested.
For, for me, a major aspect of tax abatements is the, the actual taxes that are abated. And for what we can see here, their investments for that, they've, they've already met that threshold. The, the jobs is very concerning for me. And, you know, if they weren't planning to tackle that directly, I would be very concerned But it's really if you want to put that above the, the actual taxes that have been kind of met. For, for me, I'm willing to personally give them another year to get that equipment installed and see if those jobs come. I don't necessarily see what it would hurt.
But at this point, and Mr. Huber, you may have something to offer to answer this. If we pass a resolution saying they're in compliance when they're not, does that create problems for us? And again, only in the jobs.
So that, that's what I wanted to address procedurally. Sorry. Mike Huber, Director of Development Services, City of Elkhart. I think either way you make the recommendation, either way, whether it's a compliance or non-compliance, it goes to the full council and the full council gets to have this conversation again and the company gets to, you know, have their say in front of the entire council if you choose to allow them to do that. That's, as Drew mentioned, if there is a finding of non-compliance at the next meeting, there is a non-compliance hearing. That guarantees the company an opportunity to state their case in front of the entire council one more time. So procedurally, Alex, there's no, I don't think you can make the recommendation in compliance or non-compliance. Again, as the designated body, you have the determination to determine, the state statute limit is substantial effort. There's no threshold in the state statute. You have the ability to make that determination. Now, we have, we have an adopted policy in our MOAs for many of them that are 95% threshold. We've historically been in, in alliance with the other jurisdictions inside the county and adopted a 90% compliance. That's the information that we present to you. We try not to make a recommendation. We do try to present the facts and let you guys make the determination based on the facts and the circumstances presented by the company. But certainly, there's nothing in the statute that requires you to use that 90 or 95% threshold to find a compliance or non-compliance in terms of making your recommendation.
I will say I have concerns as a teacher, you know, when you start to let things erode, you know, you say these are the rules and people say, where are the lines? And, you know, if you don't stick to the lines, then maybe there are no lines. But I really do appreciate the effort of the company. So at this point-
Did I address your question adequately?
Please.
Yep. Great.
Are you making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a proposed resolution 25-R dash 25 with the finding that the property owner is in compliance with the statement of benefits for personal property and the statement of benefits for real property and the stated conditions in the designating resolution.
There is a motion. I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
And again, thank you for your work in the community. Appreciate that commitment.
Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-26 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-r-26, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marine Realty LLC DBA Bennington Marine South are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits CF-1 form, CF-1 RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R4422, R4822, and R4922.
Thank you. Drew?
Bennington Marine South was approved for a five-year tax abatement in 2022. They built a new building on their 2800 Marina Drive and they are, they, they completed their investment in real property, however, they have been under two years in a row for jobs. And for, for new jobs hired, they are at five of 19 new jobs. And so they are under, in my conversations with Bennington, they cited industry issues. The marine industry has been down and that getting that number back up to compliance would be dependent on the marine industry and, and, you know, and pontoon production. And in a conversation earlier today with the company, they were unable to attend tonight, but they will be able to attend the July 9 meeting.
Correct. Question for John here. If they are unable to attend, does that mean that we have to find them in non-compliance because they are statutorily obligated to attend this meeting?
John, ask for corporation counsel. It does not mean you have to find them in non-compliance. It's certainly within your, within your authority, given, given the information that's been presented and the absence of any contrary information. You can, you can refer this back to the council with no recommendation. You can make a recommendation for a finding of non-compliance based upon the information that's before you.
Thank you. Well, uh-
So, you know, this is one of those where I said we, we had a line, we kind of went against that line just now, but now we have a company that is not here to present the facts to us. The facts were persuasive to me in, in the last situation. So I personally, with this one, would pass along the recommendation or the resolution with the recommendation for non-compliance.
Okay. Are you gonna make that motion?
I will. I don't know if you have any thoughts to offer before I do that.
Um, no, other than you gotta show up if we find you in non-compliance and we're willing to work with you as we just did with the, the last company, if, if that's the case.
And I also want to point out the last company being, I think it was 166% of the investment that they had said they were going to make also was compelling to me. So those are slightly different. So with that in mind, I move to adopt proposed resolution number 25-r-26 with the finding that the property owner is not in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for personal property or with the statement of benefits for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I believe it was just real property?
Sorry. Just the real property. So I would amend that, just a real property, of course.
All right. Most to amend, I'll second that all in favor, aye. All right. So there's a motion. I will second your amended motion to find them in non-compliance for real property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. Okay. Melody, could you please read proposed resolution 25-r-27 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-r-27, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Elkhart Concord, Concord LLC is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, real property CF-1 form, CF-1 RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R3323, R3423, and R3523.
All right. Thank you. Drew?
Elkhart Concord LLC was approved for a tax phase in, in, in the fall of '23. Their ERA expires at the end of 2026. They, they are currently 68% compliant for real property improvements and I believe 57% compliant for new jobs hired. We are satisfied with the progress of this project. They've invested considerably in Concord Mall, are continuing to, to hire employees and lease tenants and we, you know, we, we are very satisfied with the progress of this project.
Uh, do we have any, do we have a timeline? Will they be able to, to reach that by the, the end of their ERA, do we believe?
There is a company representative here this evening. He's joined virtually.
We're working on it there. One second. Bear with us. To be able to unmute yourself? There you go.
Yeah. Hi, council. This is Jeff Martin with Industrial Commercial Properties. Good to see you again. Can you hear me? See me okay?
Yes. Good to see you.
So Jeff Martin, Industrial Commercial Properties, Mayfield Heights, Ohio. Appreciate the collaboration. Been working closely with Drew and Mike on, you know, the various redevelopment efforts for this project. And as Drew alluded to, we're already, you know, well on our way to satisfying the, you know, ERA criteria by year end 2026, I believe Drew is right? Or is it year end '25? Well-
That, that is correct, Jeff. December 31, 2026 is when the ERA expires. That, you have until that time to make additional real, real property investments.
I appreciate that clarification. So, you know, as we alluded to, we're probably two-thirds of the way there from a leasing perspective with the old mall property. So we have, I think, three new tenants who are up and operating by the change in the calendar year between '24 and '25. And then we have another executed lease for the former JCPenney building that is going to bring, you know, significant investment on top of what we've already spent on the property. So, you know, we find ourselves on track to meet the investment thresholds that were outlined, you know, with the SP1 form at the beginning of the phase in process here. And, you know, also we've created 57 jobs, or sorry, created 49 new jobs and retained 58 existing jobs through the existing retail tenants that were already in place when we purchased the Concord Mall. So 107 total jobs to date and, you know, tracking to be well north of the 150 jobs that were originally forecast.
Uh, real quick, could you say the, the number of new jobs created again for us? Because on our CF1 we had, was it 57?
Let me double check. I may be looking at an older version, but my, mine shows number of employees retained 58, number of additional employees 49.
Drew, if you want to.
Uh, the CF1 we had, we, we, there was submitted by ICP, highlights 58, or excuse me, 57 new jobs and 58 retained jobs.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I'm looking at an older version of my screen here. So what is that, 115 total jobs? So even closer to our 150 benchmark. The tenant that we're working with on the former JCPenney's anticipates another 40 jobs. So that'll put us over the, over the hurdle right there.
Sounds good.
Yep.
This one's more straightforward for me. I'm ready to make a proposed resolution if you're ready to take it.
Right.
I move to adopt proposed resolution number 25-r-27 with the finding that the property owner is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Melody, could you please read proposed resolution 25-r-28 by title only?
A resolution of, or proposed resolution 25-r-28, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Playcon Corporation is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R1420, R2720, and R2820.
All right. Thank you. Drew?
Playcon was approved for a, in 2020, Playcon was approved for a seven-year real property, five-year personal property phase in. They completed their real property and personal property investments and they were compliant in 2022 and 2023. However, last year they were under on, on new jobs hired and this year they're, they are also under on new jobs hired. And they're, they cited industry issues and there's a representative from Playcon here this evening.
Thank you. Could the representative?
Mike Nielsen, General Manager, Playcon.
Hi, Mike. Tell us what's going on.
So in February of 2021, there were big storms in Texas that wiped out the petroleum industry. First of all, what we make is medical device packaging, so it's all plastic. They weren't making any products for plastic for quite a while. And then in March 2021, our largest supplier, Eastman Chemical Company, had an explosion. So we were put on allocations for almost everything we make. For, that one was only about four months, but some items were a year and a half. Kind of like the toilet paper buying, that's what our customers did. So we grew tremendously. We maintained the staffing levels required for over a year. We peaked at 105 employees and then the destocking started towards the end of 2023. With that, in January, instead of laying anybody off, we consolidated our third shift into two. Actually, January, we started working four-day weeks to keep everybody there. Then in July, we went to two shifts, not laying anyone off. Glad to say, just in April, we opened the third shift back up. I'm up to 81 full-time employees. I have eight temps currently that I hope to turn into full-time employees and the business is coming back very nicely. So I don't have any concerns about getting to that number. We just weren't in December.
Those supply chain issues been resolved?
Yes. Yeah, my lead times are back to, you know, some of my six-week lead times went to 50 weeks at that time. So, yeah. And-
I'm not a math teacher, but that doesn't sound-
Yeah. And medical advice, you know, $3,000 implant comes in my $5 worth of packaging. You don't shut them down for that. So it was time.
Alex, any questions?
I do not have any questions, but again, this is where it gets murky for me because, you know, I, I feel like, thank you for being here. We have a representative here. They're making a good effort. They're being forthright, you know, giving us the-
Their facts.
Yeah, right. But again, it would go counter to the recommendation, I think, that the staff had. So again, I'm just interested in, in your thoughts about that. I would be, at this point, thinking about making a resolution, finding if they are in compliance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely leaning the same way because they are, it sounds like they were hit pretty hard by a, a unique supply chain issue and they worked rather hard to keep as many employees as they could and, you know, the benefits that go with that as well. So, so that's where I'm, I'm leaning. Brent, do you have any?
I would lean towards them being in substantial. But the future holds and what, that's it, I've watched how you invest. I hope we hire an Elkhart fee.
Absolutely. I'm an Elkhart guy.
Me too.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think I'm ready to make a proposed resolution for, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed resolution 25-r-28 with the finding that Playcon is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for personal property and statement of benefits for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Melody, can you please read proposed resolution 25-r-29 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-r-29, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Tretit Tire and Wheel Company Incorporated is, is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property form CF-1 PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R3818, R4218, and R4318.
So Tret Tire was originally approved for a personal property tax phase in in 2018. They immediately installed a portion of their equipment, which was assessed, starting their CF1 compliance requirements in 2019. However, a significant amount of their equipment was delayed due to COVID, supply chain issues, which Tret, and Tret received ERA extensions in 2021 and 2022 to accommodate the, the delivery and installation of the new- in 2021 and 2022 to accommodate the, the delivery and installation of the new equipment. The extension, extension installation delays resulted in the remaining equipment not being installed until fall 2022. This created a five, five year layer on the new equipment once it was assessed. In spring 2024, Tread submitted a CF1 that was not presented to council. As city staff interpreted the expiration of the original five year phase in period to be applicable to the new, the new layer. With the 2025 CF1 submittal, Tread raised the issue of the layer and appealed the state's interpretation, requesting we revisit the issue. With further guidance from city legal, state, and, and the county, county offices, we determined that five year, a five year layer on, on the new equipment is aligned with the original application, SB one, and ERA extensions approved by the common council. Based on this new interpretation, we are presenting both the 2025 CF1 and the 2024 CF1. As noted in, in the 2024 CF1, the company has, has met the compliance thresholds for the, for the investment in job categories. However, their average annual wage of 3,3,871 for new employees is below the 90% compliance threshold and represents a figure that is approximately 60% of the city's median income. At the July 9 meeting, if council finds the company has made substantial efforts to be in, in compliance, staff will present a waiver of noncompliance at a future meeting, which will allow them to retroactively receive their benefit at the end of their phase in. If council finds them not, not in compliance, then, then the, the standard procedure for all noncompliant companies will follow.
Drew, it says here, the average wage was 33,871 for new employees and that is below the 90% compliance threshold. What is the 90% compliance threshold as far as wages?
They're, so they're 89, they're 89%. So, so they are very, they are very close, but they, they are, they are under nine, 90, they are under 90, I believe. I, council minister, I couldn't tell the exact, the exact number that, 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 we did look at that.
Oh, so 89 is just below the 90?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. This seems like a rather complicated one.
This is very unique to, to this company and this company alone, but, but we placed this, the 2024 CF1 in the noncompliant category, given the low wage, low wages. Their 2025 CF1 isn't in the compliant category as the wages were above 90%.
Okay. So 2024, they were just at the threshold, under it, and then 2025, they are above the threshold.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and they have, they have two additional years in, in their phase in for 2025, 2025, 2026 is year three. They have, and they have two more years.
Okay. So plenty of time still for that.
And there are representatives from, from Tread Tire here this evening.
Yeah, if you want to come up and say anything.
So first of all, talk about the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. I'm Kate Womack with Jam Tax Advocates. I help prepare the CF1 forms and whatnot for Tread Tire. I've got Julie Walsh here as well with Tread Tire. I'm with Tread Tire, the vice.
Give me two seconds here.
Excellent.
So for 2024, Tread It Tire, there was probably a reporting error, but their average wage for the additional employees came in at 89.9% of that 90. The 90% comes up to be 33,920 and some change. They were, what was originally reported was 33,872 for that annual, for the additional employees.
$20.
The, yeah, the total average is for all employees was about 44,151 after the adjustment to head count was 44,775. Do, did you figure out what the issue? We reran the numbers because it was so close, just to figure out what happened. Sometimes we find that, you know, maybe inadvertently a terminated employee right at the, you know, cutoff was included or whatnot without scrutinizing the numbers. But again, we're at 89.9% of that total number. And then, as you can see, over time, over compliant with head count and aver, and, and total salary and also investment.
Okay. Thank you. Was the corrected CF1 submitted to the city?
I believe so. Did you have to send you a copy? I don't think at this time, but we're happy to resubmit with the minor changes if needed.
Thank you, Katie and Julie. We would just like to note, we have, we have not seen the updated numbers that were, that were just, that were just presented.
Okay. $20, I think anyway, from give or take. Alex, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay.
Sign in. Did you sign in? Can you sign in before?
Oh, it's under me. I'm sorry.
Brent, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just remembered years back, you were having some. Check the fire to what's going on now with the.
Could you please speak into the mic?
It's gotten incredibly complicated. So we have actually taken our business and we've diversified our vendor base to try to pivot ourselves out of China as much as we can to eliminate some of the issues that we're having with the tariffs and those higher costs.
Steady with your business first, keeping.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
So, Mr. Michler, I have a question. I have two numbers for a resolution number, and I'm not sure why there were two when I wrote it down. One is if it is in compliance?
Yes. 24.
Gotcha. I think I would make the resolution at this point. Make a motion to adopt a resolution saying if they are in compliance. But again, since there are only two of us, I am interested in your thoughts, I guess.
No, yeah. They were very close. I mean, there's a difference between 89.0% and 89.9% and the difference is like $23 or $22, give or take. So I'm not entirely that concerned with that. Otherwise, they would, they would hit that 90% threshold. And it sounds like they're continuing to try to support their current employee base by diversifying and making sure that those jobs remain here and.
And I do appreciate they're here. Again.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here and explaining. Appreciate it very much.
Anything else we can help with or answer?
I think I'm good.
Okay. So you made the motion.
I would, actually, I didn't officially make it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 25 dash R dash 29. And again, I want to make sure I got the numbers right, with a finding that Tread It Tire is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for personal property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
Second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. Thank you very much for coming. Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 30 by title only?
Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 30, resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether PECF Enterprises Incorporated, DBA, Triangle Rubber Company LLC, and Seven Guild LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5324, R 5624, and R 5724.
Thank you. Drew?
So Triangle was, was just approved for a, for a real property and personal property tax phase in in November of 2024. And they, they were assessed for some, some new equipment that was installed. And, you know, they're just getting their project started. And we are, we are satisfied with the project, or progress of their project. And they, their ERA ends December 31, 2026. So they have plenty of time to make the investment. And there, there is a representative here from, from Triangle Rubber who can talk more about their business and their project.
Sure. They would like to come up?
I'm Ellen Simons. I'm with Triangle Rubber and Plastics. So as Drew kind of said, the project, I guess, was a little bit delayed. We are not heavily RV in our company, but we are heavily automotive. And a lot of the new business we had was in like the electric vehicle segment. So those projects were delayed, in some cases canceled. We have replaced all that work, which is a good thing. But those jobs aren't really scheduled to start now until later this year. So I think, well, we, we hired one new person for that facility to help with automation, but the bulk of the positions have just been delayed. So.
Okay. Thank you. Alex, any questions?
No, I'm interested in your thoughts on this one. So how about you?
You know, I'm satisfied with, you know, the staff report. It, it sounds like they're just getting started. There was some industry delays, but they're continuing to push forward and they have plenty of time in their ERA to, to get stuff done before it's concerning to me. Brent, any questions, comments?
Like to say, it's good to see new companies coming forward and hope we can do what we can is move them forward. And I think we auto approve.
Thank you.
So we, there's, there's one aspect of tax payment we want to highlight. We hired a minute ago with Tread Tire. So when, when a company makes real estate improvements on personal property improvements, they're in their ERA. So every time that, when, when they're assessed for those improvements, that creates a, a layer. So they, so Triangle Rubber is receiving a deduction based on, based on the, the equipment that was installed. They receive 100% deduction on that. And the la, a layered phase in the schedule allows them to capture full benefits on, on, on their project. So they, they will receive a partial assessment for the equipment was installed. Then let's say the rest of the equipment is installed this year, 2025, then they will receive another layer, which is, which would be the assessed value of that equipment minus the partial assessment. And that's very similar for real estate improvements as, as well. And we just, we just want to highlight that, that mechanism and that, that, that aspect of tax payment and in the MOAs that are approved by council. We show a deduction schedule. So you, you guys, you guys can see that, you know, they install equipment or make real estate improvements. And this year, they will receive, you know, 100% benefit this year, 66 this year, 33% the next year, and so, and so on.
The intent is just to clarify that they're only getting the benefit on the, what they've installed. So what's been assessed, what's been installed and assessed is the only thing they're getting. So they're not getting 100%, you know, just, and that's what the layer creates. Just want to make sure you guys are aware.
I would like to make a motion. If that's acceptable. I move to adopt proposed resolution number 25 dash R dash 30 with a finding that Triangle Rubber is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for personal property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
You have a motion. I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
I've got them in this book.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
All right. Since we have the compliant companies, they were sent to this committee. We will go ahead and give them the recommendation. I don't expect that to take very long, but they are here, so we shall do our duty to do that. Say that again? Could you come up, say that on the record, please, so I do not get in trouble?
I was going to suggest you could do it en masse if you wanted.
Okay.
But it's perhaps more technically accurate to do it.
Would it be legal to do that?
You're just making a recommendation back to the, do it, do it the way you've always done it. Never, don't do it in mass. Let's, let's.
Well, don't they have to be read just to be in the record?
All right. Let us do as tradition says. Would you please read? Proposed resolution. 25 dash R dash 15 by title only.
25, our resolution, proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 15, resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 80, uh, 21, R 1321, and R 1421.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion or a motion that I would like to be made?
Can I just go with the so moved on this one? Or do I?
You have to.
I'm going to have to go with the, I move to adopt proposed resolution number 25 dash R dash 15 with a finding that Alliance 2021 is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form. What I don't know is, was it personal property?
Real and personal.
Okay. Personal property and also for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 16 by title only?
Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 16, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 819, R 919, and R 1019.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain any council comments or a motion.
I move to adopt proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 16 with a finding that Alliance 2019 is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for personal property and also the statement of benefits form for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 17 by title only?
Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 17, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alpha Systems LLC, DVS LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 4320, R 4420, and R 4520.
At this time, I will entertain any council discussion or motion.
I make a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 25 dash R dash 17 with a finding that Alpha Systems is in compliance, in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for personal property and the statement of benefit forms for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion is carried. Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 18 by title only?
Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 18, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether E O Z Business LLC is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, real property CF dash one form, CF dash one RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 3820, R 3920, and R 4020.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain any council discussion or motion.
I move to adopt proposed resolution number 25 dash R dash 18 with a finding that E O Z business is in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits form for real property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Melody, would you please read proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 19 by title only?
Proposed resolution 25 dash R dash 19, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Flexible Concepts Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property form CF dash one PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5121, R 5721, and R 5820. approved under Resolution Numbers R-5121, R-5721, and R-5821.
At this time, I will entertain any council discussion or a motion.
I move to adopt Proposed Resolution Number 25-R-19 with the finding that Flexible Concepts is in substantial compliance with the Statement of Benefit Forms for Personal Property. Make sure I get this one right. I believe it is just personal property on this one. Is that right, Drew? Okay. And the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
We have a motion. I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Melody, would you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-20 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-20, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Hull Lift Truck Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits Forms and Memorandum of Agreement approved under Elkhart County Resolution Numbers CC-2021-13 and CC-2021-16.
At this time, I will entertain any council discussion or a motion. Drew?
I would just like to highlight, Hull Lift Truck was there on the corner of County Route 6, County Route 17. They were recently annexed into the city in 2024, and so County Council was the designated body. They approved the phase-in, and now with the annexation of Elkhart Common Council, Elkhart City Common Council is the designated body. And they have a five-year real, three-year personal.
Yeah, that's good to know. Was that brought to our attention during that annexation, perchance, that we were annexing a business that was in a tax abatement or receiving one?
We were unaware of that, and the Elkhart County Auditor's Office informed us during the CF1 compliance process after they received a CF1 from Hull Lift Truck.
Would it be a huge problem for future annexations just to let us know that it's not your fault or anything? But that might be something that would be good for the council to know, because that impacts projected, you know, taxes that we get and such.
We understand.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain any council comments or a motion.
I move to adopt Proposed Resolution Number 25-R-20 with the finding that Hull Lift Truck is in substantial compliance with the Statement of Benefits Form for Personal Property and Statement of Benefit Forms for Real Property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's good. Moving right along. Melody, could you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-21 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-21, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Kim Crest LLC, La Isla Bonita Properties LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefit Forms and Memorandum of Agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-4716, R-4916, and R-5016.
At this time, I will entertain any council comments, Drew, or a recommendation.
I would love to make a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution Number 25-R-21 with the finding that Kim Crest is in substantial compliance with the Statement of Benefits Forms for Personal Property and Real Property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Melody, would you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-22 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-22, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marson International LLC is in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits Forms and Memorandum of Agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-422, R-622, and R-722.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain, well, anyone, but any council discussion or motion or...
I move to adopt Proposed Resolution Number 25-R-22 with the finding that Marson is in substantial compliance with the Statement of Benefit Forms for Personal Property and Real Property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Melody, would you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-23?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-23, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether SCG Acquisitions Company LLC, DBA, Speed Grip Chuck Company, Swanee Precision Holdings LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits Personal Property Form CF-1 PP and the Memorandum of Agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-524, R-624, and R-724.
At this time, I will entertain a...
I believe this one's just personal property. Am I reading that correctly? Yep, okay. I would like to make a motion then to adopt Proposed Resolution Number 25-R-23 with the finding that Speed Grip Chuck Company is in substantial compliance with, sorry, I said it, and then, personal property tax, sorry, the Statement of Benefits Form for Personal Property Tax and, or for personal property, excuse me, and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
But it looks like there's some discussion.
To be clear, John Espry Corporation Counsel, to be clear, the committee is not adopting the resolution tonight.
Yeah, we're just confirming a recommendation.
You're making a recommendation.
Thank you.
You're voting to recommend to the council to adopt or not adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, John.
I'll get it right on the last one.
Most made, I seconded, we had discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And then... Melody, would you please read Proposed Resolution 25-R-24 by title only?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-24, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Tread It Tire and Wheel Company Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits Personal Property Form CF-1-PP, the Memorandum of Agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-3818, R-4218, and R-4318.
At this time, I will entertain any...
Recommendations.
...comments or recommendations.
Yeah, thank you. Melody, I actually do have a question. I have this written down, both as 25-R-24 PPP.
...in compliance and 29...
Okay, got it. So I would like to propose that we make a recommendation to the full council that, with a finding that Tread It Tire is in compliance, in substantial compliance, with their Statement of Benefits Form. Sorry, everybody, is this a both, a real or a personal?
This is just, this is just personal.
Okay. Statement of Benefits Form for Personal Property and the conditions stated in the designating resolution.
I have a motion, and I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Being that there is no other discussion for this committee at this time, we are adjourned.